I'd like to call the meeting Tuesday, March 21st, Springfield Local School Board Meeting, to order. At this point, the roll call, please.
Mr. Petrie.
Here.
Ms. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Hofer.
Here.
Mrs. Farola.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have some presentations.
And I'm going to turn it over to Christina.
Hello, everyone. I would like to introduce Mrs. Terry Kaiser, our Sparkle Cheer Coach. She has brought some of our Sparkle Cheerleaders to come and perform for us this evening. So, come on up. Mrs. Kaiser, do you want to introduce your team first?
Okay, team, come on up. Coaches, come on up.
She's so excited now.
So, my name is Terry Kaiser. We have had our Sparkle Cheer Program for 13 years now. And I want to introduce to you some of our coaches. We have Kiara Schultz, giveaway. Kiara was an alumni here at Springfield, and now she's a special education teacher, which is amazing. She cheered with the team actually for four years and has been coaching for five. Mrs. Harmon, who also works for the district, she's been on the team too since day one. 13 years, and we're still going strong, which is great. Lilly Keener, 13 years, she was on the very first team that we had. Joey Reese, he's been on the squad for 12. Leilani has been on the squad for, I've got this written down, Leilani, seven years, seven years. Then we have Malachi, who's been, he's a senior this year, he's been on the team for nine years. Brielle Wersler's been on the team for eight. And Leilani Hawk has been on the team for seven. So, Alissa, all good? She's been on the team for two years, and she is a spicy, spunky little dancer, I'll tell you. So, all right, we are going to go ahead. All right, so let's go ahead and line up over here. Slide over there. Slide over there. Remember. Joey, stop doing that. Nobody. Don't do that. All right, are we ready? Can you get up here?
Go.
What's your favorite color? Yellow, red, gray, and white. What's your favorite color? Yellow, red, gray, and white. What's your favorite color? Yellow, red, gray, and white. Those are kids.
No. Go.
Are you proud to be a Sparkle? Yes, we are. Again. Are you proud to be a Sparkle? Yes, we are. Are you proud to be a Sparkle? Yes, we are.
Thank you so much, cheerleaders. I'm so glad you guys got all ready to come and cheer with us for our board meeting tonight.
Yes, thank you for having us, okay.
So, Christina, can I just talk a little bit about what the Sparkacular was? Sure. So, the Sparkacular was a cheer, it's a all-inclusive cheer competition that includes high schools and studios and other kinds of places from all over the state of Ohio. How many teams did you have this year?
We had 10 teams this year.
10 teams, so, I mean, they came from Mentor, from North Olm, or not, was it?
North Ridgeville.
North Ridgeville. So, I mean, that's a long drive for a lot of those schools to make. So, it just goes to show that our program here, thanks to Mrs. Kaiser and her coaches, has developed a reputation for excellence and to make their students feel included and involved in cheerleading, so.
And this is our fifth year for this showcase, so we're hoping to have many more, and it just gets better and better every year, so.
I said after I left that Saturday, I think I said it to Mrs. Penner-Goss, like, it just is like, it just reminds you why you're at school and why you do what you do every day. So, it definitely makes you feel good. So, if you didn't get to go last year, you should put it on your calendar for next year, and definitely make it out.
Yeah, it's a good day. It's a good, it's a good feel-good day for everybody, so.
Yes, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
recognized. Mrs. Warner?
It looks like we have one of our students that's present this evening, so we're going to start with Tyler. Both are here? Oh, awesome. Tyler, why don't you come on up here? Tyler is our high school, no, he's our junior high nominee. He has one of our high school teachers as well. So, this is what they wrote about Tyler. Tyler's working hard in algebra. In fact, he just got a 100% on the test we took this week. Tyler always turns in his homework on time. Where Daffy writes H.W., because that's how she says it, right? And participates regularly in class. He's very polite and courteous, and he's always willing to help other students understand the math concepts we're learning. He's also a two-sport athlete, and he has learned to balance both sports as well as school. He's a true picture of a student athlete. He was nominated by Dr. Burgess. So, this is what is displayed right now as you come into the door, and then later it'll be moved down by the community room. And then I also have a certificate that says you were Student of the Month. I'd like to shake your hand. Congratulations. Maverick, will you come up too, please? So while Maverick's on his way, let me read what Mrs. Weakland wrote about Maverick. Maverick is an amazing 11th grade student. He has taken advanced classes and CCP classes throughout high school. He currently has a 4.15 GPA. Maverick is kind, polite, and so interesting to talk to. He's wise beyond his years. You can see his smile in his eyes and hear it in his voice. He is upbeat and positive and an overall nice human being. Maverick has goals and knows what he wants. He is smart, strong, and resilient. Nominated by Mrs. Weakland. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
On behalf of the school board members, we congratulate, I want to congratulate, we want to congratulate Maverick and Tyler, and thank you for being the, being the kids you are, being the people that you are, because it only makes the building better, it makes the world better. So, thank you so much for all you do, and thank you for having this program. I think it's a good recognition.
Thanks to the parents, too, huh?
So, you could stay if you like to and watch the rest of the board meeting. That's, if you have nothing better to do tonight, that's fine, we would love for you to stay. Or if you like to leave, you can leave now, too. It's totally up to you.
Have a good rest of the evening.
Have a good, thank you, yes. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
At this time, we'll have board members in formal comments. Mrs. Mill, would you please start?
Why did I start today?
Yes, please.
I'm not used to that. Beautiful day outside, usually I'm the last one, so. I know we wrapped up our winter sports, and I just want to thank all the coaches for all of that. I also want to thank all the, we have one coach here that's a spring coach. You guys have been out there really hustling, trying to raise money for the kids. That means a lot, I know, to our parents and everything like that. We're now in our third sport of the year, so for some parents, this is 900, some parents, this is their $1,800 check that they've written. So to have coaches out there hustling really means a lot. I know the baseball team was out going to door-to-door last Saturday when it was, what, 28 degrees out, and going business-to-business. We had quite a few businesses step up and donate to our athletes. So, I just want to extend a thank you. I know this is an athletic, but as a parent, as a board member, as a resident, to know that people are out there stepping up and helping our kids and our families really means a lot, so. For me, that's really all I have, so.
Miranda?
I don't have anything to add, thanks.
Wow, that was quick. For the softball team next week, as they're traveling to Myrtle Beach to, for practice and to start the season off, good luck to you. Board members, I will forward you the legislative, it's been a long day, I've been in Columbus, legislative liaison notes, it is quite in-depth. There's a ton of things happening at the State House. One, I will send you Dr. Howard Fleeter's Howe Educational Policy Institute write-ups on some of House Bill 1, which seeks to revamp and untangle the knot, as I was told today, of property taxes and income taxes. So I will send that out to you forthright. I will make a report of what, at least the notes that I took today. Got to hear Governor Dewine speak today, the Senate President, and the Speaker of the Howe Representatives House. Then I got to hear a panel of Catherine Engel, she's a Democrat out of Cincinnati, Senator Brenner. It's interesting to watch the body language there, there's definitely some issues there. And then I listened to, on the representative's side, it was refreshing in the sense that even from a Democratic point of view, they are not against choice, sending your kids to schools, but the platforms that need to be in place, and so things are transparent in spending state dollars on charters and vouchers. So it was a very interesting conversation. I will send a report and my notes to you later time. That's quite a bit, but thank you.
What was the most startling thing you heard during your, as you listened to everyone? Because I know we've been reading what's in the paper, but what doesn't make the paper?
One of the contrasts that I picked up on was Governor Dewine wants to fully implement Cup Patterson, which we all understand, as you and Chris really understand, was bringing state dollars up to speed with our school systems. Then I heard this, well, if, if, if everything is funded according to Cup Patterson, these other issues of, like, House Bill 1 shouldn't really matter, and the audience kind of was like, I don't think that's going to happen. There was definite, there was definite some oohs on that one, and I would have to agree with that, because you're looking at rewriting that bill, as it stands right now, a billion dollars in loss and revenue across the state to school districts. There was some other that we would get back, but in the end, it looks as we would lose. People were respectful of Governor Wine, his reading initiative and the science of reading, he really wants to push that. You'll see that coming down the pike, which I am for. I struggled in reading when I was in grade school, that is still a passionate issue. I still struggle with reading. It's just, it's just how our makeup is. Some people excel at certain things, other things are, people are better at other things. That was, that was a stark contrast there, Cynthia, that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I picked up on that really quickly. We were very skeptical that you could make that kind of statement and still say, yeah, we're funded over here, and then pull this away, and things would be okay. I'm like, and I didn't agree with that.
That leads to debate, and debate, debate is good.
Yeah, it was.
Kenny?
You know, the only thing I have is I, my favorite part of all these meetings are the kids we recognize at first. Every week or every month, I'm amazed at the students we have here, their accomplishments. That's all I have.
I would like to recognize Terry Kaiser. She's been recognized tonight, but I was, I was in the district when this program started, and I saw it start from such a small scale, and it didn't take long for it to grow and for the students to be pulled in, for the parents to really feel that there was a place to belong, both for themselves and their students, and to see it continue and be as vibrant it is, is, I think she and all the, she's had a lot of help, I can't name everyone, but she and the people that helped with that program need, I just want to thank them on a personal level and recognize them.
And, you know, just a couple of things. I mean, I sent with you the letter that the photographer had said that he was just amazed at our school, the way that our cheerleaders and our Sparkle cheerleaders were constantly together. You know, you chose, some other schools, they separated, but our kids were always, like, our cheer team was always with them. So that's, that's, you know.
It's continued.
It is, it's fabulous. And if you've never got a chance to go to the Sparkacular, I am telling you, it is unbelievable. It was, you just brought a smile to your face, I mean, you could be having the worst day ever, you go to that, and you're just, you're just smiling. It's just a great feeling. I do have some athletic notes, I forgot to print them out. We did host the Chair State Send-Off. Our cheer team did compete in the 2023 State Championship. We finished fourth in Division III Non-Building. We finished seventh. All divisions for non-tumbling, non-building. Coach Bethany Tawab was a nominee for the OASSA's Coach of the Year, which just being nominated was a huge achievement. The team enjoyed their overall trip and experience, and we're going to recognize the cheer team next month. They're going to come and maybe show us some things that they did in-state, so we're excited about that. Springfield, we placed third as a team in the Metro Athletic Conference. We had a total of seven placers and one MAC Champ. Omar Leon, he was our MAC Champ. We have 10 sectional placers and five district qualifiers, and as a team, we placed sixth in the sectional tournament, so we had a really good showing for our winter sports this year, so that, that's pretty awesome. The Winter Sports Assembly was held last Wednesday. We had 23 of our winter athletes selected to be on the all-conference team. 65% of our winter athletes were on the honor or merit roll, and 50% received the Metro Athletic Conference Scholar-Athlete Award. And this award is for any letter winners and have a 3.4 average. So our sports teams, I mean, I think you have the tables in the, after-school where the kids can go for tutoring if they need help. You know, the coaches are constantly looking at their scores and just making sure that, you know, you have to be well-rounded between athletes and athletics and school. Spring sports are underway. The softball team will start their season over Spring Bay, it's at Myrtle Beach, so that's awesome, competing in the Cal Ripken Experience, and the team will begin their trip coming Sunday. And for everybody out there, the Spartan All-Star Booster Club Reverse Raffle Tickets are now available. Raffle will be held on April 15th. Contact any Springfield coach or the athletic department if you would like to participate in the program.
Pam L'Koskius?
$75 per ticket.
That's for dinner and the tickets.
And the tickets.
And $30 just for the board, and then there's like another.
If I told you something, you wouldn't bring in a test?
Okay, okay. Did you see, did you, how did you like that for teamwork? I mean, it took four people to do it, so thank you, everyone, on that one.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, at this time, we'd, I'd like a motion for approval of minutes. It is recommended that the boards approve the minutes for the regular meeting from February 21st, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
It has been moved in second that we accept this recommendation. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
All right, the motion is passed. It is time for citizens' comments on agenda items. They're welcome at this time, and participants shall be, speak within a five-minute duration period. Are there any citizen comments, please? All right, seeing none. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of February pending audit, and an exhibit of the bills has been presented to the board.
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for February 2023. Three exhibits of financial reports have been provided to the board for their study.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's moved in second that the board accept the financial reports. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Under personnel, it is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 11.1 Retirement Resignation of Teacher Carol Tolson effective June 21, June 1, 2023. 11.2 Retirement Resignation. Accept the retirement resignation of Teacher Lisa Smith effective July 1, 2023. A resignation of, accept the resignation of Teacher Amber Wersler effective the end of the workday on March 17, 2023. Employment. Reassign Classified Employee Teresa Morrison as a 4.25-hour routed driver on Route 52 effective March 6, 2023. Employment. Employ Danielle Garvin as a two-hour educational assistant at Spring Hill Elementary per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and that would be effective March 8, 2023. 11.6 Employ Natasha Smith as a four-hour custodian, 50% at Spring Hill Elementary and 50% at Shrop Intermediate per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective March 9, 2023. 11.7 Employ Carol Simmons as a two-hour cafeteria worker at Shrop Intermediate per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure effective March 14, 2023. 11.8 Administrative Contract. Approve a three-year administrative contract for Christina Zigabut as Student Services Directory. 11.9 Appoint a three-year administrative contract for Michelle Warner, Springfield High School and Junior High Principal. 11.10 Non-Sport Supplemental Contract. Band Boosters Funded. Approve the following non-sport supplemental contract for 2023 school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and this is, and is paid once funds are received in full from the band boosters. That would be Jack Elliott as percussion instructor at 14%. Those are all the items there.
So moved.
I'll second.
Just a couple of things I'd like to pull out for 11.1 Carol Tolson. Carol Tolson has been a teacher at Springfield for 22 years, and she was a tutor for four years prior to that. She was a tutor at the high school and at Roosevelt before teaching special education at Shrop. Lisa Smith has been with the district for 11 years, and she's taught arts those 11 years, and she's taught them at the high school, junior high level. And then Amber Wersler, she is resigning, and like, her last day was February, February, March 17. She's been with Springfield for 12 years. She started out as a tutor at Roosevelt, and then she was hired as a teacher for the first grade at Roosevelt. She's taught first grade at Spring Hill and third grade at Shrop. And she left for personal reasons, but we did find a long-term sub to take her position for the rest of the day, for the rest of the year, and Mr. Jovanovic is working with that person. The administrative contracts, there were two that were taken out from here, and they were taken out because they both applied for the Shrop principal's job, so we will do those in May. I want to thank Michelle and Christina for making my first nine months here, you know, having a lot of crazy ideas and everything and following through and, you know, looking at me sometimes going, mm, but then listening to what I have to say and trying to make that work, and it's changed, and change is hard, but I think, I think we're heading in the right direction for that. And then just the last one, that band booster, so the way that the contract reads on that is, it's, the band boosters pay for that position, but they do the position first, and they complete it, then they give us the money, and then we pay for it. And I think that's been negotiated in the contract probably for several years, so that might seem like a kind of, like, why are we paying somebody now for a job that they did in the wintertime, but it is per the, it is per the agreement.
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
The motion passed. Number 12, Resolution Amending, excuse me, Amending Resolution 23.018 in connection with the submission of the question of levying an additional tax. It is recommended that the board approve Resolution Amending 23-018 in connection with the submission of the question of levying the additional tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation to the electors of the entire territory. of the entire territory of Springfield Local School District pursuant to sections 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the revised code. And we were given a copy of the language for that submission.
I will explain a little bit after we get the motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So what happened is after the six school districts that submitted a levy on the ballot, it came to their attention, Board of Elections, that per a newer revised code that they didn't, no longer wanted cents. Cents as in dollars and cents, it just wanted whole dollars. So all six of the districts, us included, had to create a document that shows, instead of, say, $132.96, $133. So it doesn't change the millage at all, it just, it just makes all the districts in compliance with the law. So once this is approved, what I'll do is I'll send it to the Board of Elections, and I'll also send it, I'll send it to our lawyer that does this kind of work, just so he can have it on his file, because he produced the document.
Who produced the?
Justin Markie from Hudson Landers does our, does our levy.
So it wasn't the state produced it?
Wasn't a mistake on our lawyer. It was all six districts in Summit County had to adjust it, so. We're still on the levy, we still have the same issues, still the same village. Nothing has changed.
Thank you. At this time.
I will, Ms. Terry, you say this first?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed. Number 13. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer. And we've been provided with an exhibit of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
This is an annual event that happens every year. Just allows us to collect on the outstanding levies that are out there.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Fourteen point one. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with Stark State College for the College Credit Plus program for the 23-24 school year. And we have been, yeah, been provided with an exhibit of the memorandum of understanding. This is just one of many of the schools that we do this with, so I believe our kids can attend.
Yes.
Wherever.
I'll second.
Been moved in second.
This is our second one. We did at Stark last month, then we did Stark State, so we expect University of Akron to be rolling in pretty soon.
Question. I see, going through here, I've seen this, and I mentioned it to Dustin, and it was mentioned to me today. It was on item 12. Is that, it's in the Stark State package? Is that where it says parents must be made aware of the content that will be? And that's a sign-off for it? That it came from the Hudson local, is that how that started?
That actually had been in when you, when you signed for your child to do CCP courses or College Credit Plus, you already signed waiver regarding the content. That it might be more mature content than what they would be offering in high school.
It's been around ever since I've been around. And that's a long time.
Just asking a question.
The Hudson situation did call attention to the paperwork that was required, though.
Yeah.
You know, I think people just use the signing stuff off, and, you know, so they just brought it back up to the light.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Resolution to appoint legal counsel. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution to appoint Enes Briton, LPA, to represent and provide.
Legal counsel.
Yeah, legal, I'm not seeing it.
Open it up. Break that down.
Oh, duh, sorry. I knew what they were doing, I just couldn't find the words. That they will be providing legal counsel to the board.
So, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun on that one.
I'll make a motion.
You need a?
Miranda made the motion. I'll second it.
So this is, as I put in the board notes prior, they're going to be used for our general counsel. You know, we're still going to be using Western Heard for our special ed, and we're going to still be using Retsel for our bonds and tax levy and things like that. It's just that any time that you bring lawyers or a law firm into the school, you just have to be approved by the board. And we will have, where everybody will be able to meet the two.
They'll be coming.
Yeah, they'll be coming.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed. OSC Governance Policy Change Resolution. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution regarding Ohio Schools Council, OSC Governance Policy Change.
I'll make a motion.
Miranda, second?
I'll second.
So the Ohio Schools Council is a group purchasing consortium that we partner with primarily for electric power and natural gas. This policy change was requested by their governance, their Board of Governors there to appoint the superintendent to be able to vote for future changes within that organization there, so.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion is passed. The next motion is one that the whole community, I think, has been waiting for.
Yeah.
Land Reutilization Corporation. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution approving and ratifying a sub-recipient agreement with the Summit County Land Reutilization Corporation for the Ohio Department of Development's Building Demolition and Site Revitalization Program and any necessary amendments thereto whereby the district will be the recipient of $728,250 in program funds for the demolition of Roosevelt Elementary School and further appropriating and authorizing the expenditures of $242,750 in district funds as a local match for said project.
So moved.
I'll second.
This is, this has been a longstanding promise, though.
It has been moved in second, Mr. Adams.
The, the $242,750 in district funds will come from our permanent improvement funds to complete our portion of the project here. The timeframe for this project looks as if we will have the asbestos abatement completed around the late summer, early fall, and then the demolition and cleanup of the property completed by late fall there, based on current estimates. The grant was originally submitted in December of 2021, so we've had to revise some of the estimates and plans there. So based on that, we believe that will be the timeframe here. So if anything changes there, and just as we go through the project, I'll keep you regularly updated of how this is going.
And we're going to send letters around to?
Yeah, a press release was put out to local media, as well as was sent out to the residents that connect to the Roosevelt property there, so they were aware of what's coming.
And we dig us a couple positive, like, woohoo's.
Yeah, congratulations on getting the grant. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed. Do you want to speak before we have the motion? I think it's fine, but.
I'm just ready to go, what?
All right, for our five-year forecast, it is recommended that the board approve the March 2023 five-year forecast to reflect the revised financial recovery plan, which is exhibit 11 for the board members.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Adams, been moved in second. Would you like to speak to the matter?
You think? Yes, I would, I'm being facetious. Just kind of clear things up before I would do one in March. We're still going to have our five-year forecast in May. But when you change your financial recovery plan, the commission wants you to put together a five-year forecast that mirrors it. So what you approved last month now has become the official five-year forecast. You know, at first I thought, well, that's a little silly, you know, we're going to do another one in May, but that's the rule. So I put together the five-year forecast to show where we are right now. I'm proud to announce that the May forecast will come in better than where we're at now, which is wonderful. So where we're at right now, if you look at line 12.01, it's over there, that $1.5 million. It's taken a lot of energy and sacrifice, but that's where we're at. I anticipate that number becoming over $2 million by the end of the year. People say, why? Well, our health care is better than I expected. Our SFR funds is helping out our general fund, and this will be the last year. So our Personnel Services are coming in a little better than expected. Here's the number, though, that I think we all need to focus on. Right here. That's the levy, and that's our unbound. Takes you up to 2027. As we can see, it's a significant change.
Say that again, that's the, you said that's the levy?
This is the levy.
Okay.
You receive one half of the proceeds in the year following. There's the full amount. So you'll see what happens. This is without the levy. Red is bad, okay? You're negative 2 million by year 2027. This is what it's like with the levy.
And that's the May levy that?
This is the May levy that's on the ballot. It's the difference between the two numbers.
So then, it's a five-year levy, so that they'll continue on another year with the $1,793,000?
One, two, yes.
Okay, then what happens with the other half with the $869,000?
You only get a half of it, though. The levy is based on calendar year.
Gotcha.
That's based on the square.
So it kicks in on the last half.
Yeah, so.
Does that count as, does that count as year one, though?
Does this count as year one?
Yeah, because it's a five-year levy, does that count as year one?
Well, you're going to get five full years of proceeds, so you'll get the other 869.
The back half of the five years.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then I guess my question is, how long does that last us on 1510? How long will that last us? When we get to the 3 million, almost the 4 million mark, how long will that last us when the five years is up?
Well, look at your trend up here. You're talking, you go from $518,000 to a negative $2,253,000. So that year, it changed by 1.8. Again, a forecast is really good for two to three years tops.
Okay.
Because you have your buy in your budget.
Right.
We all know, if they take away home sales rollback, the devastating impact it's going to have. 12%. Go all the way on top if you would, Dustin, to real estate collections, okay? You're talking $13 million up there in 2027, $12,917,000. You could potentially, potentially lose 12%. 12% of that is?
1.5 million? 1.5.
It happens earlier. That's why if, if that occurs, I think you're going to see a massive amount of school districts hold the club, because can you imagine what Akron's real estate? They have a quarter-billion-dollar budget. Their budget is 10 times ours, and probably even a little more now. So let's hope they understand the ramifications. And it's not just a school district that's going to impact, it's going to impact parks and libraries and all of our, you know, collections that we have.
And in response to your question too, on that, you know, one of the things that we cannot allow to happen is us to go back to the same old, same old. So it seems like a lot of times when levies are passed, you know, they go back to what was, instead of looking forward and saying what is. So, you know, one of the things is to always make a five-year levy last at least seven to eight years. Again, if the state keeps, if the state doesn't do what the state says they're going to do, you know, we're going to try to make that last at least seven years, would be my goal. But again, as Chris says, whatever, if that state pulls through with what they say they want to do, it's going to be devastating for everybody.
Correct.
It's going to be devastating.
The new health care policy is definitely helping. I'm doing the plug for my wonderful assistant. If you haven't signed up for the new health care, they have a vitality program that we're going to be doing during the COVID phase. And I'm free to have it, it comes where you have it, it kind of gives you a little motivation if you need it, or if you don't. But we do receive monies back. The more employees that sign up, the better. It's completely private, nobody in the school district sees any of the information, and it truly does benefit people. It gives you kind of a goal. But in two months, I'll be coming out with a new forecast, and I'm hoping I can be true to my word and show you even a better forecast, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We have to vote now, or? We didn't vote yet?
No.
Okay.
So, need to vote?
No.
Not yet. We're ready to vote.
Ready to vote, yeah.
I think. Any other?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry? Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Thank you. That's going to be my trophy report, too.
That, I was just going to ask. First of all, that motion passed, and Mr. Adams, you have no additional treasures report, is that right?
We are the only one that has new money that I know of. A lot of reals are right now. Coventry has a reno. Dustin, do you have any?
Does Magador have new money?
Magador.
Lake has new, Lake has new money.
Oh, yeah. Lake has a huge.
Waterloo has new money.
Lake has a 13.9. Lake has a 13.9.
13, yeah.
Versus our 3.77. Magador has a 9.9.
Compared to our 3.77.
Compared to our 3.77.
And Waterloo has, I think theirs is an 8.9 or a 9.
Yes, we have a very low compared to our peers. Wow.
I just felt that needed to be out there.
Yeah, 13.9.
Wow, that's pretty heavy.
Heavy.
Yeah.
That is, that's, that's really heavy. That, I, that's just, that's heavy.
Well, just heard from a Columbus board member that they're looking to expand down there and revitalize. They're looking at a 15 mil.
What do those people do for a living?
Columbus school board member today.
Wow.
Well, good job.
So, you know, with, you know, with us, our emergency with our 3.77 levy that we're going on the ballots, you know, we're gonna be frugal enough to make sure that that lasts us, it gets us what our kids need, and our staff and our teachers to get what we need to get us back on the upswing.
That's correct.
Next item is central office report. Mary, who's gonna start, Dustin?
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, first thing I'd like to provide you with an update this evening is this Friday will be our first distribution of the Spartan snack pack program, the renewal of that. So, we will be packing items here out in the hallway or the gym here this Thursday evening to get those ready for distribution on Friday, and be doing that. We'll have different Thursdays throughout the remainder of the school year. We are looking for volunteers to help with that, so if you're interested, please contact me, and I can get you set up with the date and time where we need volunteers to help pack those and get those ready. Right now, for the first week of the program, and we are hoping to be able to expand this as the need is there, we'll be serving 71 students with food items for over spring break. The bags will be a little bit larger this week than in future weeks due to spring break and a little bit longer time where students may have those food insecurities there. So, we're very glad, thankful to Mayor Natha Congregation for helping with their food drive to get this program back up and running, and Heather Anderson leading that program to get it back out and get food in the hands of students in need there. So, this will be a great program coming up for our students. Also want to mention...
Something under that, and we also like to thank Springfield Assembly of God for partnering with, along with the food insecurities, partnering with the high school and Michelle, so we can become, so we can work with the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank to help supply our Spartan pantry, which the food drive here helped supply it until we were able to get elsewhere on there. So, you know, we've got a lot of community members helping us all the way around with their families. So, you know, a huge thank you out there. Sorry.
Another item that would like to provide a brief update on is, this week is severe weather awareness week for the state of Ohio, and along with that, tomorrow at 9:50 a.m. will be the statewide tornado drills, so you may hear tornado sirens out in the community being tested, and schools are encouraged to complete their, one of their tornado drills during this drill as well in coordination with that. So, if you hear those tomorrow, you'll know that it is a, is a drill at 9:50 a.m. And then finally, like to provide a brief update on our transportation committee as we look at our options for transportation services moving forward. We held our first meeting last Tuesday here in this room, and we had a cross-section of volunteers for that committee, from employees representing each of the three unions to community members as well on that committee there. So, we had a lot of great discussion, I think. We presented a lot of facts about our existing cost and structure to give everybody a background of where we're at, and we, proposals will be due from the request for proposals that we released to the public on April 3rd, so we'll have our next meeting shortly after that to start reviewing those proposals, and have a few meetings in a row there to review those proposals, and we'll develop a recommendation from that committee to present to the board for your consideration there. We're hopeful to keep this timeline moving so that we can make a decision at the April 18th board meeting.
I just want to add, and I think Shelley will agree, it was a, it was an excellent meeting, excellent presentation by Dustin. The participants were very thankful to be involved. The input was frank and honest, and I think it's, like Shelley said at the meeting, it's a good way to have conversations with our stakeholders and to get their input, and that transparency goes a long way with people. And I'm glad that they felt valued, and most people, I would say, the vast majority of the people that attended were very happy when they walked out.
They were happy with the process.
They were happy with the process, absolutely.
And Dustin did do a great job with that.
So, from the curriculum department, we're looking to see if you have any upcoming kindergarteners in your household, because we are going to begin our kindergarten registration. Registration officially opens on April 3rd, but on April 20th, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., tentatively, we are going to do a kindergarten roundup. And during that timeframe, we will be at Spring Hill, where we will help parents register their children, get the proper documentation. We hope to have things like a school bus there, so that our, this is just an infancy-type thing right now, but we're getting there, a school bus, so that students can step on a school bus. We're going to have them go into kindergarten classrooms, so that way they can experience what a kindergarten classroom would look like. We expect to have Sparty or Spartan there, our parent group will be there, and we're going to have some giveaways at that point in time, too. Once again, tentatively, right now, April 20th, from 5:00 to 6:30 in Spring Hill.
And this is to, just to start welcoming our families early, and, you know, during that time, if they have any questions about kindergarten, because a lot of times this is our family's first child going to kindergarten, so this, we just felt would be a very good welcoming way for our families to come into our schools.
Good idea.
Okay, last, today, I just wanted to acknowledge that today is World Down Syndrome Day. Most of you around this room know that my youngest daughter has Down Syndrome, so it's especially celebratory day for our family, but it's just also a day for us to recognize individuals with disabilities and, you know, make sure that they're, we're reminded to include them in our society and in our classrooms, and make sure that we're showing that they can do everything that any other kid can do in their classes, and just, you know, be accepting and generous and kind to others, so it's a great day.
Just a couple things before I get into some levy stuff. I think, well, Michelle and I, and Michelle, I think we were all sitting around one day talking about what used to be, you know, sometimes, some of the things that were in the past were good things, and one of the things was Connections Day. Is that, okay. So, what Connections Day was, and I think Cynthia, you were probably a part of that...
We started at, not, I'm not taking credit, but the staff started it. They did a very good...
So, what this is, is on the first day of school for the junior high, high school, that first day is going to be only for 7th grade and 9th grade. It's gonna give the 7th grades a chance, they're gonna get mentors, their mentors are gonna be the 10th graders, to get a chance to really know what junior high is, what going to that big building is, walking around, learning, just the place, just, just being acclimated to it, plus having a 10th grade mentor. The 9th graders, even though they've been there for two years, going from junior high to high school is such a huge move that we want the 9th graders to understand what high school is, because there is so many other different windows with high school, that now, you know, your grades are really going to start counting if you want to play sports. We gotta start doing a graduation plan. We have, we have Portage Lakes, you know, we want them to really get to know. They're gonna have senior mentors. So then, our goal is that when our 7th graders get up to 9th grade, those 10th graders will be seniors, and they'll have the same mentors. So, having that continuity through it. So, we're hoping that this will make the experience for our 7th and our 9th graders coming into the high school, junior high better, just like with our kids down there. We want to make it more inclusive, we want to make it more friendly for them, so. Any questions on that?
I just want to comment that on that day, when we, you know, in the old days when we did it, the students got to see the teachers in a different light, you know, not sit down, take out your book and whatever, and it was a meshing of a lot of things. And I, I personally enjoyed watching the students interact with the teachers because they got to know them.
Yes, you know, that's a good, it's a way to start building up relationships. It's a good way to start, you know, really having, you know, talking about the rules and the handbook, you know. A lot of times they just do it in a big assembly, and, you know, you know, one-fourth of the kids are listening, but there'll be different ways of getting all this information out.
That number is too high.
That wasn't high, wasn't it? I was being very nice.
Yeah, I wouldn't say four and fourth.
Okay. You know, I want to tell them that, that, you know, there's not a pool, so don't buy tickets for the pool and, you know, or anything like that. So, hopefully, hopefully this will go good, and I, hopefully we're getting some teacher volunteers that are helping out, that are going to be a part of this. So, excited. All right, I just want to talk a little bit about the levy, as much as the levy that I can talk about. So, I don't know if everybody's aware, but Dave Yost, our state auditor, has really put out some guidelines on what can and can't be done about a levy. You know, the main part of it is that you can't, which is, makes sense to everybody, which is you can't take school funds and intermix them to pass a levy, so they have to be totally separate. That's understandable. One of the things that was getting into a little bit of, you know, what your, what your school funds are, are getting paid. So, like, for example, myself, you know, my contract says that I am 24/7. It says that in there, being that at any point in time, I am on duty. The board members, when they're sitting here at a meeting, they're getting paid. High school principal, because their job includes at nighttime, they're saying that people like the administrators cannot talk about the levy. We can talk factual about the levy, but I can't be a cheerleader to say, hey, you know, I'm not gonna finish it because I don't want to be in jail, and, because I'm on constantly. The board members, they'll, when they're sitting here, you're not gonna hear them say anymore, please vote yes or no for the levy, because they're getting paid right now, the $3 that you get paid to sit here. But the state auditor says that they can't say anything like that. So, so, whereas in the past, we've really taken the lead on the levy campaign, we have to step back now because we are not allowed to. The only thing that I'm allowed to talk about are the facts of the levy. So, what we need out there from people is, we need people to help step up and to start being really a part of the levy campaign. The board will be able to help you with the levy campaign, will be able to set you in the right direction, but we really do need people out there that, really who believe that this is what's gonna be best for our kids, to step forward and to help out. And if anybody would like to be treasurer of the levy campaign, please, again, step forward and, and to do that. I know that he put out a 21-page document on what you can and cannot do.
This was...
Mostly cannot.
Which you mostly cannot.
Dave Yost?
Dave Yost, yes.
Yeah, he's Attorney General, he was the...
Oh, he's Attorney General now, okay, thank you.
Yeah, he's the lead lawyer, and that's why he's putting it out.
Okay.
It's very serious.
People want to read it.
Um, yeah, you know what? Right now, it's just a draft.
I know, but...
And, and, you know, you might not be hearing a lot about the levy right now, and the reason being is that they promised that this was going to be out for us in November, of what could, of what we were allowed to do, what we weren't allowed to do, and we just got it out in February, 21st. So, it took them four months to get this out, and it's still a draft. Lawyers are going, I mean, every, every meeting that I go to with superintendents or professional development, this is what we talk about. This is what we talk about, because people are running scared of what they're allowed to say and what they're not allowed to say.
And what they're allowed to do.
And what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. Absolutely.
Because I found out what I did the last levy would be a no-no this time, having the kids work after school with me.
There's a lot of different things in here. So, yeah, we could post this. Like I said, it's still a draft, but please, I mean, if you really want some interesting reading, it's, it's a hoot and a holler. And it's too bad, because, this is just my opinion, I should be the biggest cheerleader for our district, and I should be the one out there saying that for three-letter word, because of the Y, ends with an S. But they've really tied our hands on this. And the one thing that we're always talking about and thinking about is, is the why. You know, what was the purpose of, of doing this? So, I, we will put this on the board, and if anybody has any questions or anything about it, please, you know, give me a call. If you want facts about the levy, I am more than happy to give you the facts. Here's the fact, we're gonna have no money in three years. So, that's a fact. Another fact that I can give you is that, based on our financial recovery plan, we will be cutting more on our recovery plan that we had said that we were going to do. That's a fact. Fact, if the levy passes, the fact is, we are going to be bringing back different programs that our kids need. We will be bringing back classes for our high school students, so they would have exploratories. Fact, we will be work, looking at our, our specials, our art, music, and gym, our P.E. for our elementaries. Fact, pay-to-pay will be cut down because our kids are struggling right now making the payment for that. Fact, thank you, boy, I got that from both sides here. Fact, we will be bringing back bussing full-time for that. So, those are facts of what's gonna happen. Fact, resource officer, and...
Adding to Spring Hill.
Adding to Spring Hill. So, those are facts. Okay. All right, any questions on that?
Same one you asked, why?
Why? I, well, I think I know why, but...
Yeah, but, okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, items worthy of our note, March 27th, spring break vacation begins, April 3rd, classes resume, April 7th, no school due to, it's Good Friday, April 10th, no school, conference comp day, April 18th, it will be the next regular Board of Education meeting at 6:00 p.m. here.
And I want to add two more dates onto that. April 1st is Springfield egg hunts, at the April Fools Day also, yes, it is.
What is it?
It's the Springfield...
Springfield Township Police Department's Easter egg hunt at 11:00 a.m.
Okay. And then on April 8th is going to be Lake Moore's egg hunt starting at 12:30, I believe it is, so...
I'll give you a funny April for teachers. I'll never do it here, ever, ever. But 19 years ago, in my second year as treasurer of Magador, I wanted to do a funny on April Fools, so I sent out a mass email to my teachers, telling them that my payroll system crashed, and they wouldn't get their pay till Monday.
Who does that?
Well, I did. I came and figured, I didn't know.
I'm surprised you're still alive.
Oh, me, too.
You need to think about your wife.
My board president, who I... My dear president, who I know very well, called me and said, oh, I said, what day is it?
You're fired.
First! I thought it was funny.
Yeah, okay. And that note.
Never to do it again.
Oh, what we adults do sometimes.
Yes.
Number, now it is time for any citizens' comments. Does anyone have anything they would like to say, address, question? Nothing? Okay. At this time, it is recommended that the board go into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employees.
And I do believe that there will be no action taken. Yes, there's no action going to be taken after this executive session.
Who motioned?
I made it.
Second?
Me.
Mr. Petrie? Yes. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
And Shelley said there will be no actions planned. Thank you very much.